Skip the pledge that leads you to a moment of silence and move on to roll call.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Rushton?
Present.
Chairman Bonnick?
Here.
Commissioner Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Sodis Little?
Here.
Commissioner Alguire?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
Alright, so then we have the continuation to review the 20.2 draft budget book.
We have public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Excuse me.
No public comment? Alright, move on. Thanks, Jeff. Alright, so discussion items. Number one. Look at the draft book. They had the board policy was sent out. Was there changes? I thought there was a couple of words that were changed in that or not?
In the, in the policy, the budget stabilization? No. I mean, it was revised in 14, but nothing...
So then...
So, I didn't know, I think there was comments, I think I had gotten up to get something at the last meeting and Michelle took over. What, did someone ask in reference to what our contingency is and then what the policy reflected? Is that what the question was, I think?
I believe it was, yes.
Okay. So, within your policy, I believe it is 3 percent, it's on page of the policy, page two. At the top, it says, "The county will establish a contingency account in the annual general fund budget to provide for unanticipated expenditures of a non-recurring nature or to meet unexpendable small increases in service delivery costs. This reserve, what shall be established, is 3 percent of the general fund revenue budget." So, our revenues that are projected, and I can go over those in a few minutes because they did change. You've got 14,907,828 to balance your budget. 1,637,985 is fund balance, so that's revenue from the prior year. So, your total is 13,269,843. That if all that money comes in, to be substantiated for your expenditures. 3 percent of that is $398,095. So currently...
It's how much? Thank you.
And we have been budgeting over the last years that I've been here, 447,000. So, you could say we're roughly 40,000 plus, okay? So, that's up to you when we get to that dollar amount. We did add the vote to that. So, if you wanted to roll back your contingency to your policy, we can do so when we get to that page. If needed, if wanted.
I'm assuming there was a reason?
For the 447? Back in the day, it was just a, I believe it was a plugged, you know, like back card to me before me doing this.
And, and so you're adding 167,000 to that 398 or the 447?
To the 447.
Okay.
So, do you want to go over the pink sheets that we've changed or just start where we left off, which I think was after Parks and Rec?
Well, I, I'm just wondering, do, do we want to make that at least 3 percent? So that we're following our rules?
To make it back to the 398?
Well, no, that, instead of here it says, "This reserve will be established at, at, at least 3 percent."
Okay.
Allowing us to have more, but not really less.
Gotcha. So, leave it as is?
Yes.
Because it is more?
Then we would leave the contingency as is.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Because you can add more, just not less?
Yes.
So, I'm saying you can leave it that way.
You were talking 13 million?
Yes. So, on your, if, if it helps, we can go through the first. So, your first set of pink pages are your revenue summaries.
Okay.
Okay? So, your revenue summary pages changed. I'm sorry, yes, your revenue summaries. So, that's the 107 tab. So, originally, when this was brought forward to you, balanced the first time, there was a little less than actually the 1.182. On your department request.
A little less than the 1.182.
In fund balance forward. The sheet that I gave you goes back and forth on the changes to the budget.
We have 1.6.
Yes, that is your proposed to adopt by board changes.
Okay.
So, that's the new number.
Alright.
Yep. So, the new 1.637985 is for you to balance your budget.
Okay.
So, your total revenues are 14. The last page, which is page seven of that number.
907.
Yep, it's 14,907. And the policy says revenues, so that's revenue coming in. The fund balance forward is taking revenue from the previous year.
Okay, so that's why you, that's where you got your 13 million?
Excluding the fund balance forward.
Okay, I missed that, I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay, so that was the third.
That's what that is.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I get it. So, that very first number is not collected. It is rolled.
Rolled.
And that's what you're saying.
Make it seven, say.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, so that's the first set of pink sheets. And then the second set of pink sheets new is the expenditure summary pages. So, this reflects the changes for like the district court where she retired and it's not being filled. So, you'll see that that's a number change between department requests and then BOC changes proposed to adopt. So, this is your, this is going to be all of your general funds and they're in by total. Any questions on that?
Where's the proposed to adopt?
The proposed to adopt is going to be the last, so the very last column, it says, "BOC changes proposed to adopt." So, since we had gotten through most of the general fund, I went ahead and rolled these to the level of adoption. Doesn't mean you can't go back on it, but right now for my ease, I took the department requests, added in all the board changes and proposed that as the adoption. So, I wasn't going back and forth. It's very confusing to go back and forth. Alright, so then the next set of sheets that I gave, that we gave, will be your, the pink sheets in reflection of the changes by the board. Or if there was a staffing change that we were alerted to before this is adopted. So, there's actually two sets. So, the one will say proposed to adopt, that will be all of the changes that were implemented by the board. So, you have your board commissioners, you have your prosecuting attorney, your county clerk, registered deeds, and then budgeted fund transfers due to the dam. So, those were new as well as the contingency. Though these were all board changes proposing to adopt. The other set of pink that you'd find from that sheet are such as like the sheriff's office, secondary road, TNT, the jail division, and district court. These were all things that happened after the print date that we now know about. So, any staffing level changes, I find it's best to do before we implement the October date so that I'm not making adjustments next year. So, that's why I went ahead and these you'll find when you go to replace them, they'll still have the hash mark at the end because you've already looked at it, but it was in the middle here that I had changed and made that reflection on. So, in some cases, that's why I did this sheet. It shows you the pluses and minuses from each department to implement those changes and why we gave them to you. And these also have corresponding staffing levels that changed. So, both sets, the board of commissioners to adopt, as well as the worksheets regularly that we knew staffing levels changed, you also have a new staffing level where that is to be reflected. The last set of pink sheets that you have is under supplemental, and this, I'm sorry, under other funds. And these are items that after print date, either you changed or somebody came to me. So, an instance, you'll find when we get to these other funds...
We don't, we don't have a thing here that says other.
I'm sorry, special funds. I'm sorry, my tab, special funds. So, when you go to special funds, and this is the majority of today's meeting, you'll find pink sheets that you have not looked at. So, that's why they will still have the lines on the side because you can still, or you will make decisions if you, if you want today to change or implement these changes. You'll find the 230 fund by Trudy. This is coming to you after she discussed with you in the August board meetings about maintenance at recycling sites, as well as new cameras, as well as a second tire collection where in the past, I believe she was just doing one or, or needed to be amended for. The next fund in that one is also under Trudy, which is going to be your 273. I believe she's mentioned to the board that the housing administration is no longer being, we don't have an employee here. So, I went ahead knowing that and, and changed this to what she feels will be administrative costs. The 275 that you'll see as we get going. This is your CDB grant repayment fund. She's actually already talked with you about her contract with the NMCAA. And so, we, since she knew those numbers, we plugged those ahead of time for you to review. And then from there, we go to a correction I found after the wonderful request of the transfer and transfers out. And that is on the 47, 457 fund. So, we'll talk about that. That's our radio communications project. And Deb mentioned the income that all comes to cost allocate for the radios. And so, I had a revision there that I found. We'll go over the 542 as well, but you authorized two cars to be purchased. So, I plugged that number in on the 542 for Amber to try and contract out, to find cars. The 677 fund we're, we'll go over, that's your health insurance. So, any and all staffing levels that changed, that fund also had to be changed. So, if we had people in there.
We're, we're going from pink sheet to pink sheet.
Right now, yes.
Yes, just, just so, so you're aware of that.
Yep.
I'm not sure everyone knew we were doing.
Okay. And then the last one is the dam. And that's the, the approval to go from 11,000 to 29. Fund 805, the last sheet. And so, we'll start and we'll go back, I believe we ended at Parks and Rec. So, is that where we want to go back to? Does anybody have any questions first from me on any of this? Okay.
Just thinking.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Okay. No, oh, that's okay, I can use our own. Oh, that's okay. Yep, I'll take the staffing ones too.
Well, I think when we were talking about Parks and Rec, we were talking about their budget and the per diems. And I thought we decided not to change that at that time. Leave it the same?
I think so.
Really, it's almost a moot point because you, you have a policy say they get, you're entitled to per diem and mileage. So, and even if you went over budget, to be in compliance with your policy, you still have to pay it. So, if you put in 3,000 and if they go 4,000 legally, you still have to pay those people per diem and mileage unless you change your policy.
The only thing that I was unsure of and I, I didn't look back at my minutes is, are you doing anything about administration? Are you waiting for the next administrator?
We had the one question of we were paying, we had two, kind of the two or maybe the combination, the question of the minute. And, and Chad mentioned that minutes fall into the clerk, but maybe not statutorily because we're commissioned. So, that's the first question, is do we have to continue to pay for minutes? That was one of the parks' questions. Or will clerk do minutes?
Okay.
So...
And then I know that, well, that you had a request from park for a new, like you wanted $10,000 or something for somebody to be paid to administer.
And then there's the administration. So, we kind of have the two questions.
Well, just to clarify, that 10,000 was just not for Parks and Recs, that was for a whole spectrum of activities. Because right now, the original plan was for Parks and Recs and HR. And really, the net cost was about 3,000 because she's getting paid hourly and extra hours. With my original proposal was put her on salary at X dollar amount, it'd be 10,000. But if you look at what she actually netted last year, and that cost was about 3,000 dollars.
Okay, that's a whole lot better.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I assumed if you put her on, but you probably need to look at the bigger picture first before you make that decision. I can get the answer on the minutes fairly quick, whether it's, what is legal. I mean, you have to have minutes, obviously, right? And they have to be in compliance, have to be posted, have open minutes. The concern, as I understand, prior to that was that members of the commission were taking it. And there were times where the meetings were not posted properly. They would just decide to meet at, at a park without proper posting and have their meetings there and have votes there and someone took minutes. And that truly was a violation there. So, that's, I think, how it got streamlined.
Well, and if we were to do the administration, would we put that, you know, we're thinking about it, do we put that in contingency?
You could, or, yeah, otherwise it'd be a salary, right, be a salary or contract, depending on how you go.
Or, or contracts are stipend, I would.
Right, so they'd be the salary line item.
We need to keep it separate.
Same language.
Yeah, the personalities might change that we don't want, so we don't want it tied to that position.
You could do a, yeah, I was going to say, you could do a one-time, one-year-only stipend. And you see how it plays out. I mean, the Parks and Recs can independently ask for funding to hire someone to be their administrator as a contracted basis. Mine was a different format, but kind of the same net results. They agreed and I agree that they need some professional assistance.
Was that in addition to their, their budget at this time?
Yeah, that's not in here.
I thought it was, yes.
Right, that's not, that's not budgeted.
Yeah. And because we haven't settled what it's going to be, that's why I'm saying if we did, if we're going to do that 10,000 in contingency, then that would, you know, we would figure out how, we're going to, if we're going to apply it or if we're not going to as we develop that. And then, then it would ask you to be in the budget in a...
I'm just being a...
Right.
So, you're saying just put the money in it now, so it's there, and then we can do further research and come up with proposals, right?
Right.
Right.
That, that's what I'm suggesting, I don't, I don't know what, how the members think.
And then you can move forward and if there's a proposal you agree with, the money's there. If it's, we don't have a proposal or something that you disagree with, the money's not at risk.
Right, it would just go back to the government at the end of the year.
So, yours, so what are you?
I, I'm proposing that if we put $10,000 into contingency fund for this Parks and Rec administrator or helper or whatever it's, we figure out it's going to be. Because we know they need that, you know? I mean, and they've asked for it and I, I don't know of anybody here that doesn't realize that they need it because of the, the problems that they have, they don't have leadership. Or they have too much leadership, I don't know which, which you want to put it. You know? So, you know, if, if we get a facilities director, that could be used maybe for that. You know, depends on which way we ended up going. But we put it in the budget knowing that hopefully we find something to solve that problem for Park and Rec. That's just, go ahead.
So, to, I'm sorry. So, you, what, when you said 10,000, you were saying put Laurel on salary, it would cost 10,000?
That was with HR also, some HR functions, as you remember.
So, you're not saying that bill?
No.
That's what confused me.
No, 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 no. I think what you're saying is put up to 10,000, put $10,000.
Right.
Let us dig up a plan.
Right.
They would have to get board approval anyway.
Right, but when we figure out if we're going to get a facility director, when we're going to, whatever we're going to do, we have that planned in the budget for it. Michelle West?
Well, I was going to say, I've, we're not giving them what they want. All we're really doing is saying we want some help taking minutes. And I think $900 a month to take minutes for Parks and Recreation is a lot of money.
That's too much.
And, and I think, I think right now, that's all we've agreed to is that they need help taking minutes. Because we, we didn't even consider the administrator's recommendation to really staff that in that way. So, now all we're talking about is minutes. So, I, I don't want to do $10,000 to put in contingency to say we're in, I mean, I don't...
I, I didn't mean it that way.
We're talking about two separate issues here.
Right.
The minutes is one issue. That's a technical requirement. We have to have someone to take the minutes. So, that suffered from what I'll call Parks and Rec's coordination. There are two separate issues.
Compliance guidance, honestly, it's, it's really compliance guidance.
Well, just help them through the process and we go over the bids and how to manage it.
We get, you know, we get new people in and they, they get super excited and let's do this and let's go out and I'll go out and I know a guy, you know, he can give us a bid and we can get this done and, and like, I, as we all do. You, you can try to slow that down, say we can't do that, there's a process and it isn't always well received that...
I'm optimistic we have a person that maybe will take minutes. In the past, people have tried for one or two meetings and says, who do you want? It's one of our temporary subs. She's been at Parks and Recs for the last two months, maybe?
Oh, that same lady?
Yeah. Yeah, right? Yeah, she may, I think she's interested in taking minutes, so that part in theory could be resolved. But she's not going to provide the leadership. So, if they want to go out and get a project done, someone has to get the bid documents ready, contract, get the contracts ready, all that stuff. That's kind of stuff I think's been called in the past, the last couple of years.
Midis and...
Right, and, well, and, I mean, I thought that, I saw the secretary or the minute taker as something totally separate from this $10,000. I saw that the only question of that was is whether we, the park and rec pays for it out of their budget or the clerk has to provide someone. So, e- either way, that was not what I was talking about. I thought that was, we were just going to find out which one had to happen of those two. But as far as the 10,000 was there, so if we get a facility director, that, we have that money to help pay for, and that, and that would be in part, charge of the parks as well. And, and maybe that's not enough, you know, but, but it wasn't anything to do with the minutes. Okay.
I didn't think we were going forward this year with a facility director.
I, I don't know if we are not.
Well, there's no proposal to have a facility director in your budget.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it looks like, we don't know what we're doing, we're just saying 10,000. We can always amend our budget. But, I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about having a whole finance department. They could manage the bid process if we're going out for bids. I, I just, it just feels like we don't know where we're going with that.
Okay.
Alright, Commissioner Lautner?
The 10,000 was, we shouldn't be charging $10,000. That, that's something totally different. So, what we're looking at is, is if we're going to give Laurel a stipend for, for being our compliance guidance person, then how much should that amount be a month? And that's a dollar amount we're looking at is, you know, $200. It's a, or a meeting, is it, or is it for the whole month? So, will she just look at what a committee did afterwards and say, okay, I see what they want to do, this is the steps they have to do and I'll make sure it follows this step? She doesn't necessarily have to be at every committee meeting, I wouldn't think. It's just, okay, I see this committee wants to get that driveway paved, what we need to do is, is this, this, and this. So, what is that worth, worth a month for Laurel to do that for Parks and Recreation?
And does she have time? And does she want to do that?
She basically has been doing it unofficially for the last year or so.
And meetings are going to stay during the day, so we're not talking after-hours meetings. It will be daytime.
But if she's going to do it officially, we have to pay her. We're adding to her duties officially.
Correct. That's what we're doing. We're going to pay her for what she's been doing because she's working a lot of time. Does that make more sense?
Yeah, I, I just feel loose, but I, I'm...
So, what are we agreeing to loosely? We're going to figure it out and put some money in contingency?
Alright, let me suggest this.
That was my suggestion, but it's very good, I guess.
I mean, it's a good suggestion.
If you do it, and we set a precedent by giving the clerk a stipend. I believe it's $75 a week, right? That comes up to about $3,500 a year. You do it on a one-year interim basis and review it. Because you may want to restructure depending on what happens with finance, with HR and the administrative position. Hopefully, you can restructure and have someone oversee that. So, if you do it for one-year interim, it'll be about $3,500.
Is that enough?
I think that's fair.
Yeah, it's as much as a clerk's getting, it's probably more.
Where's that, Rick?
I'm just trying to come up with numbers so we can get moving, because I know it's already gone to three and you've got some other issues.
January, I, where's, where's?
Internal service.
Okay, sorry.
I can't find it under internal service.
Internal service?
I can't find that.
78.
Yep, page 78. It's not, it's not there. It's, it's going to be, did they put your pink sheet in front of it or something, my mistake?
Oh, perhaps, okay, there, I did.
Yeah, it might, it might be bottom number.
So, do we not, I was looking for it pink, we didn't change anything?
You didn't change anything, so, yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, no, we didn't change anything there.
I couldn't find it. 78 of internal services, okay. So, that's then, that's the, now I can, now I know what I'm looking at.
So, if that's what you think you'd like to implement on 1-1, then I would end up increasing the salary by 3,500?
But do we want to do it salary, we would do it...
If you do a stipend, a, a...
I would say a stipend.
A stipend of the $75 weekly.
Okay.
I don't have my, I should have brought a calculator.
It'll be about 36. If you put, if you put 4,000, it'll more than cover it. I would still have to come to the board with a formal proposal, you'd have to approve it. At least you have the money in the budget and you can move forward.
And I can make that work to see what it looks like weekly?
Okay, so approximately 36,422.
Okay.
Okay.
Does the Parks Board meet the committees and the full board? Do they meet four times in different weeks per month?
Lately, yes, well, the last...
Yes and no, I don't know about committees so much.
It, it varies.
Like, the whole board never met in July.
But the committees, the spring, they were meeting on a pretty regular basis. It was very time-consuming.
Well, let's give it a try and see if it works.
It's getting less squishy. It's sounding better.
But what we don't have in here is if we have to continue to pay for our minutes, there's that temporary office, office assistant, that, there should have a number in there too, but I don't think we should have to pay for that.
Well, let me get a clarification. That's a good question because you're a commission, where that falls in line with the...
Okay.
But I can get that clarified.
Okay.
In the scope of a budget, that is a pretty minor thing, so let's, get that clarified and then we can go forward.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Makes sense?
Yes. I guess that's what I was trying to do, maybe it was too high.
Okay, so nothing goes in contingency and we look at the $75 a week? Anything else on the Parks and Rec? On to page 79. I believe from previous discussions, the last number, the capital outlay, 857, 56, 970, second row from the bottom, you're keeping that at 45 from the previous meetings?
Yes, at least.
Yep. And there's 4,000 in capital LA, under 5,000 in the event that's needed.
Okay.
So, the next page is going to be your budgeted fund transfers, this is page 80 of 82. This corresponds with the document that I sent yesterday. These are the transfers out from the general fund to support either external agencies, county departments, county-owned parks, and so forth. So, the change here from your previous sheet was under, but BOC changes proposed to adopt is now 29,000 for the dam.
So, transfer out is to a different department or... So transfer out is to a different department or entity?
Yep, an agency. Um, they actually all go into, all our transfers out go into another fund, which we're going to go next to your special funds. So they'll correlate with the document that I sent, that you'll see money coming in. Not always to supplement the full budget, but in some cases there is. All right, the next page, if nobody has questions on eighty, is going to be your page, um, well, eighty-one. Um, this is a reflection where I spoke, I believe, at the very first meeting regarding the debt service transfer out. This account and this line item is for your LEC debt bonds. This payment has been brought down to reflect using the money savings in twenty-one to pay for twenty-two's payment. So that's why it is less than what's the previous column. Page eighty-two of eighty-two is your contingency. This is the policy as well as, um, so as I stated, it'd be three ninety-eight is your base, three percent. We are doing more than three percent, and then I've added in the one sixty-seven, which is a third of the boat. Bringing your total general fund to fourteen million, nine hundred seven, eight twenty-eight. The next tab we go through is the special funds. The very first fund that we go over is Fund Two-Eleven, inmate housing. Um, currently, under Chet's direction, the third line down, jail reimbursement from the Grand Travers Band. We are keeping that at one twenty-seven, seven five for budget purposes.
Now, that may change, but we don't have an agreement in place, so, say, until we have a new agreement with new numbers, we have to keep the current.
Okay. So the only number, um, that I did.
We, we don't have a new agreement.
Oh, new agreement, yes.
We have current agreement, it has that amount.
What is that current agreement that's fired?
Uh, there is no expiration date to that size, but if things go well, we will have a revised proposal to you either after October or November or maybe.
Okay. So this is, uh, this fund is how in the jail, they have allocations either paid from, by the prisoner or from another entity. So Grand Travers County or the band and so forth. So there's more revenues on this line than there is expenses when you're looking at the, the two pages together. Because the largest expense is that money comes out to fund the jail and the general fund. So this is a transfer, this transfer out here, and on the form I sent you, it shows the transfer in. I was conservative in this transfer out since Chet said you were in negotiations. Otherwise, I do not try to keep, um, a lot in here, I try to send it over to the general fund when possible. Um, but not knowing that number, I did go conservative on that transfer out.
Of one ninety-three.
Yep, one ninety-three from two forty-one.
So back up, um, a page. We have, um, jail reimbursement, jail reimbursement, other counties, um, so year-to-date, we're at approximately $28,000.
Mm-hmm.
Where are those Grand Travers County, gen, mostly?
Yes, I believe so. I was thinking he had pointed that off, but he did not. I, he said that he had upped it for twenty-twenty-one when he was in front of you by another $5,000 because Grand Travers was sending more than in the past.
He's got thirty-five.
Yep, so he's got thirty-five. Um, without talking to Todd, but I believe so.
I think it's Grand Travers.
Mm-hmm. From looking at our master roster that we see in the circuit court.
All right.
But your big draw is that Grand Travers Band.
Right, right. Okay. And then the general re, general popular reimbursement, where's that, um, where's that from?
I believe the general pop reimbursement is when they bill out to the inmate, and then they, yeah, the services that come back.
Back, we never know, that's like a guess.
Yeah.
All right.
And in the, did you say what indigent reimbursement is?
Indigent, indigent.
Go on about that.
Um, I do not know what indigent reimbursement in other counties is. We could ask Todd, but I, I see there's only activity this year. There hasn't been any prior, so that might be new, and then he's budgeted it now. But we could ask what that revenue is, because it looks like it's brand-new.
Well, there's also another, there's, um, point two-three, oh-two-three, indigent reimbursements, there's a little bit in there.
Mm-hmm.
But is that, that's the same thing as the line below, but in county? Maybe?
I see that.
Okay.
General population reimbursement.
Mm-hmm, that's the one that Olinda was asking about.
Okay.
I believe you get a bill when you leave.
I was hoping it was coming from like state or something, but.
We do get some social security checks that Olinda don't get, a few.
Oh, really?
Social Security, yeah. All right. Any questions on page two? We do have to have, at the very first one, we have to have inmate health insurance in the event that they are taken to the hospital outside of our nurse. Um, they have postage, medical supplies, health services, on top of what our contract is. The next line item is eight-three-five-oh-oh-one. Uh, Todd and I discussed this. This was actually a health services bill, um, that was sent, it's a twenty-twenty bill that was sent late. So I wanted that pointed off, so that when we came to you, it didn't look like he had spent $4,700 of a fifteen-hundred, of a $2,000 budget. So I left that in there on its own. In the event that he overs, if, if this does go over, I just need to amend that, and I'll be looking towards that, towards November. He hasn't had any refunds. And then the transfer out. Page three of seventy-eight is two-thirteen inmate commissary. This is basically the vending, so whatever comes in gets spent going out. Right now, he's proposed $7,000. Any questions on inmate commissary? Community corrections, page four of seventy-eight. So this is the top of the list of the email that I sent out of the transfers. This is the very first transfer out from the general fund to the community corrections, which is an external agency. Uh, it's a contract with Grand Travers County for $10,350. And they invoice us from Grand Travers County for that. So I transferred, the, the transfer's been in, and then we're just waiting on the bill to pay it. Page five is friend of the court. Friend of the court is also in agreement with Grand Travers County. Um, the budget comes through at forty-eight, three hundred. Typically, depending on the year and the case flow, um, you can see that, um, the contribution in eighteen was twenty-seven, contribution in nineteen is thirty-four, and in twenty is thirty-seven. So we do budget forty-five for what would be considered like a maximum exposure, um, but we have hit as low as twenty-seven in the past. This is a fund that, uh, most times I do not transfer until it's needed. So it stays in the general fund until it's needed.
Most, most of their funding on the FOC comes from state and federal sources. Um, they have to manage every second of their workday, um, so it can be billed back accordingly. So that's where they're, it's a multi, it's millions of dollars to run that operation. So your portion is very, very small.
Who is our contact person now, the friend of the court?
Jeremy Hogue is a friend of the court.
Jeremy?
Hogue.
Hogue.
H-R-U-G-E, I believe it's in.
H-R-U-G-E.
Page six is the recycling, so you'll have a new pink sheet there. Uh, Trudy's kept the revenues the same. And then we're utilizing fund balance from the prior. A lot of times, recycling gets collected in December and then goes, uh, through to the next year, so she sometimes sees an influx in that, that December. Um, so she had me, uh, when she and I discussed it, on that first one, that's fund balance forward, the second one is the current taxes. The third, with a number, is your scrap tire cleanup. So she, um, bumped that revenue up, stating she's going to have for sure two.
Okay.
Yep, and then tire recycling fees. And then, uh, she does schedule for refunds and rebates. She does, uh, put that in there.
Okay, you, you said that, but this is the revenue, so she's bumped that to $10,000 for the revenue?
Yes.
Because she's getting two, two grants, or?
That, she didn't actually tell me which, she just mentioned that that was going to be the, the amount that she wanted in there. I don't know, did she have an amount prior?
So the fees are?
No, there was nothing budgeted prior.
Yeah.
It's thirty-five hundred, then a dollar tire, is that where that comes in?
That must be what she bumped, yes, because you can see in twenty-twenty-one, she's got thirty-six, thirty-four was collected in the middle. Twenty-one to year-to-date was thirty-six, so she bumped it to thirty-five. Um, she took down the overtime, um, they haven't been, that, that time hasn't, um, hasn't been showing those numbers, so she left a thousand there. Uh, the only time it comes into the salary, which is the seven oh-three, so you'll see a number there, but it's not budgeted. That's in the event that, um, they're allowed, in essence, to flex. So she's allowed to give them the Thursday afternoon, because they work Saturday, she'll do that, and then the salaries come from here in versus overtime. Per diem is for her board. And then social security and retirement is for the staff that work the collections. Her op, rest and operating is the last one there. And then on the next page, page seven, she's got her electronic. Um, and then we get down, two more from there is the seven seven-five of repair and maintenance. Um, when she and I discussed that, she did the fi, the fifty thousand. Um, she stated in reviewing this and then talking with you last month in August, that she comes to you anyway to ask if you'd like to repair a site, but wanted the figures in there if, in the event the board says yes. So if you don't spend it, fund balance forward is less, but that, the decision is up to you as a board. And then the attorney fees, she did take that down to zero. She stated to me that everything that she has or has experienced in the recycling is, falls under the contract, so she doesn't need the extra there. And then down from there, you've got your contractual American waste at three fifteen. This is a new number, the eight oh-one-oh-oh-one for contractual miscellaneous services. And these are things that fall outside the American waste. Um, her board had, I believe, asked her for that, that, to look, that they had the American waste separated, so they knew the number they were working within for the year. And so then, this is for miscellaneous, other contractuals, if needed. And then you can see.
By American waste, you mean GFL?
Yes, yeah, yeah. We should probably, I'll ask her if she wants to change that, but yeah, now it's GFL.
And, and the other contracts would be like the electronic stuff?
Yes, yep.
You know, and maybe even the tires, would they do with somebody else?
Yeah, and I think, because she works sometimes with an engineer as well.
Yeah.
I thought that's what she mentioned.
The only thing, the only other thing I thought might be in this, I'm not sure, because American waste has been really good in the past about not charging us when they have to clean it. When someone leaves a television behind, or car seat, or ironing board, or kids' toys at the recycling site, American waste has been just fantastic about just taking care of them. Because, um, they have our other contract with them, but he, he, I believe he indicated he wasn't going to be able to continue to do that. So I don't know if some of this is in there or not, I, I, but.
Yeah, she just asked me to plug that this time, because it wasn't reflected last.
Yeah, it's been pretty unfair to them.
Mm-hmm. And then she wanted the household hazardous waste, which is two down, which is eight oh-one-oh-three, she bumped that, $10,000 from what I had prepared earlier. As well as the tire recycling, that went up by ten. So she kind of offset that with that revenue. And then the rest of these have stayed the same. Um, she had come to you regarding, um, capital outlay, which is the last number from the bottom, and that is the cameras. And then the last one is the operating transfer out. She was utilizing fifteen thousand, and, um, after talking with her, we went with the cost allocation plan that the county pays for, and so that was increased to seventeen nine oh-five. And that is a transfer into the general fund. That's on our list.
Does she show the seventeen thousand income? I don't see that for that capital outlay.
I don't believe so. I believe she's using fund balance forward on those cameras, just like this year, yeah. Once you approve the cameras, then it kind of triples.
Works that way.
Yeah.
All right.
But it was good to go back and put it in, um, after, after that. All right, then the very next fund is the two thirty-two, this is your dispatch nine-one-one services. Uh, currently, I am using a little bit of fund balance forward, um, just means that there were some expenses in the previous year, and so there's a balance that I can utilize. Um, in this fund, you have your six ninety-nine, which is your operating transfer in from the general fund. And then your two thirty, six ninety-nine, two thirty-three is your E wireless at a hundred and sixty. That's your telephone, um, on your cell phones that comes in. And then six nine nine, five one eight is your, um.
So, so.
Oops, sorry, go ahead.
Yep.
Yep, is your tower communications. So this was at the very beginning, at the first meeting, when we handed out those sheets and you guys talked about the ARP funds. So one of the things that we have not drawn down in a large numbers or blocks in the tower fund is the fact that, um, we were anticipating having to put up another tower. So you can either leave this at the one twenty, you can change it to increase, to take more from the tower fund. Um, if you plan on using ARP funds to erect a tower, you can also make that decision and change it next year as well. Typically, on my general fund transfer, I do it quarterly. And so if you decide to use ARP funds for a tower and you want to revisit this, you could do so. Um, it would lessen your general fund money and bring money in from the tower.
Oh, can, can we, I just want, I just want to go back.
Yeah.
All right.
Did you want to look at the tower at the same time?
Um, no, that's because, for dispatch, because I, I.
Yep.
I heard you say phones in there, and I, and I didn't find it. So we brought, we have our fund balance forward.
Yep.
Care, sack, hazardous, pay nothing, okay. Um, refunds and rebates, something, okay. The general operating transfer in, the, the eight hundred fifty-four thousand is general fund?
Yes.
Over to pay for our nine-one-one services?
Yes.
Okay. And then the hundred and sixty, that is the forty-two cents per device, telephone device?
Um, it's the forty-two cents for the capital, is the, is the forty-two cents for, this is E nine-one-one, so it's when you pay your cellphone bill. This one's the cellphone.
Okay, so it's a forty-two.
So the other one, I think, is the landline for the, the, the radios. So I believe this is cellphone. So this E nine-one-one money here.
It's all the same, isn't it? The landline cellphones are separate?
I don't believe so.
They're separate.
They're separate, yes.
Okay.
So this is your E, in a sense.
Right, that's right.
So the state collects this one and then sends this one to us.
Yes.
This is the state. The other one that we'll talk on in a few minutes, that comes from each provider. AT&T, that's who he's money from, she gets from all these providers, that's supplementing your radios. So this is your cellphones. So we're estimating, I've kept it at one sixty. You can see year-to-date, you've taken in eighty-six, so it could come up a little bit more.
So the state collects this.
Mm-hmm. And then sends it to us.
On cellphones and sends it to us, that's a one sixty.
Yep.
So the forty-two cents we set on the landlines.
Is a later fund.
Later fund.
Yep.
Got it now, thank you. Okay.
So like I said, the tower would be the only one, uh, that we put in that memo that I gave him to Chet, that in the event if you wanted to, if you're going to use your ARP funds, um, that that tower fund is healthy and you could use more of it to subsidize your nine-one-one dispatch versus the general fund. So the changes here are just going to be reflected in your salaries, which is your personnel. And I don't see anything that's really flagged. Um, and then the next page, which is page ten, he kept his, that first line, office and operating, the same. He did change his contractual services.
And, uh, what does he, what does he expect, is that much, but?
No, I think, believe he came at the very first, um, because he was looking at, um, a contract service for equipment, and it came in, he gave you a range, a large range, and it came in less. So that's just a slight difference for the soft, uh, for whichever his purchase was going to be.
Because it's generators.
No, it wasn't generators there, it was something else.
I don't know.
And then we didn't list why, but he, it, he originally had projected for you a $68,000, and he, we. And he took it, he took it down to twenty-seven after having the, the meeting with whoever's going to provide the service. Um, here, under the eight five one oh oh one, so underneath cellphone, this is your radio communication maintenance fee. This is the cost allocation that I talked about on this form, on the transfers for your four fifty-seven, which is your radio. So we charge nine one one, uh, to utilize the radio com. And then that's the fee that goes into the, so it's per unit. That's where that's allocated from. And then the only change at the bottom, under nine forty-one is your computer. And that's because we are doing, um, run at one hundred percent. Any questions with dispatch? Next page is eleven, uh, two thirty-three E wireless. So the first, where it comes under, it's called state grants. That's the E money that's transferred, so that's where the one sixty matches. And then the nine one one surcharge, the one twenty, that's where you're coming from with the forty-two cents. So this is basically state and local money coming in and then both transferring out. Next page, twelve of seventy-eight is the fund two thirty-four. This is the nine one one training fund. This is state allocated money that comes into the nine one one dispatch fund. And then Matt has certain state, um, education and travel that he can, uh, send the dispatchers to that is reimbursed. And that's what comes through here. And he has to log that and, uh, report that to the state. Otherwise, they take his money back. Page two forty-one, I'm sorry, page thirteen, which is fund two forty-one. This is our veterans campus maintenance. The donations have kind of been on a dwindling side the last few years. And so we do operate, uh, a transfer in from the general fund in the event that the maintenance costs come in over what the donations are. So last year, if you go to the 2020 audited with me, with us transferring in two thousand, you were a hundred and sixty-three to the good. So far, with a transfer in of two thousand, you're eight oh three to the good. So this is one that I watch too, before end of year, to make sure that I'm not over the expenses. Typically, if we do have something that's the engraving, how many veterans are getting added to the wall? Um, page fourteen of seventy-eight-
The engraving is done just at cost, correct?
I believe so, I'm not sure what the agreement is with the gentleman that comes out.
Yeah, it's always per name.
Yeah, I don't think we make money on that.
No, no.
No, no. I did not change, um, two fifty-six, um, ROD automation fund, page fourteen of seventy-eight. We discussed this early on with, um, the register of deeds, Jennifer Grant. And this was proposed with her new contractual. So this stayed the same. You, you said that was okay, so it just, it stays where it's at. Page fifteen, um, this is the budget stabilization fund. So typically, we budget for the interest earnings and then we have it in a contingency. With the policy that I sent you regarding finance and the reserves, this states that the revenue fund, the reserve fund will be maintained at fifteen percent of the prior year's general fund budget or an average of the last five years' general fund budgets, whichever is lesser. So I took the number from last year's budget on your expenses, which was thirteen million five. I multiplied it by fifteen percent per the policy. And your budget stabilization per this policy would have two million thirty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy. It currently has one million two nineteen five fourteen. That's a difference of eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. The last time money was put into this fund was in two thousand and two. Probably not for a topic for today, but it's a big number to, to take in, but I was asked.
So you're talking about the budget stabilization fund?
Yep.
Two fifty-seven?
Yep. It shows here that we budget for interest earnings and then like a contingency, meaning that it rolls in. Otherwise, this wouldn't have a budget, if I didn't show.
So where is the corresponding page for this page?
For the two fifty-seven?
Um, yeah.
What do you mean by corresponding?
Where would we see what we've got, you said a million two and?
Oh, that would be, um, here with the trial balance, with the cash. And I can send that to you if you want.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I just was trying to wrap my head around the numbers. So we're a little bit low on our budget stabilization.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, and how is revenue brought into, we just take it out of general fund?
But you fixed and repaired and paid debt down since two thousand and two. So my, I would presume, um, I wasn't here, and so the clerk could definitely make comment to that. I would presume in two thousand and two, you were able to put the money in the budget stabilization and then you built a building for cash.
We did. This building was cash, twelve million?
Whatever, yeah, I'd have to go back and look. It was my first year here in oh five.
We bonded the jail-
Bonded the jail and built this.
You had to bond the jail, you had to hold the cash, you know, the bond, maybe you did it for most of your findings. But there, it was also taken from DTR.
Mm-hmm. So and then since then, your track has been repair or paid down murs and so depends on?
Stabilization.
Yeah, it is your own policy, so something, just like in contingency, we have more than three percent, not less. That kind of thing, but I was asked and so I prepared that for you. The next budget is PRE audit fund. This revenue comes, um, in from the interest on the county share. And then the position has changed and, from the past, why there was overtime, um, under the expenses and such, um, was due to, um, oh, that's interesting. Um, changing from a part, a full-time deputy treasurer to a part-time PRE auditor and part-time, um, I shouldn't say part-time, it's shared. So this, this fund shares with a deputy treasurer, PRE auditor in the treasurer's office. So this fund transfers out into the general fund for that staffing. So we, um, analyze what that cost will be projected for twenty twenty-two and then we do the share that's been approved. And then that's how that number is, um, figured in. And then the contractual services here is typically for the law firm. Page two sixty, I'm sorry, page seventeen, which is fund two sixty, is the Michigan intelligent defense fund. Um, with Michelle and Chet knowing what was coming down, um, you'll see the income from the state and the general fund transfer in. And then you'll see the zeros for the staffing in-house, but you'll see the large contract number that you just approved in August. It is an October state start.
So this is Paul Jarboe?
Yep.
Correct?
Yep.
Forty-five thousand, that's?
Yep. And then these are the fees that have been reported for the budget to the state.
Um, so, so, uh, court-appointed attorneys?
Mm-hmm.
There are line where those are ever billed back? If we take it a court-appointed attorney, is, is it just court-appointed or are they ever billed back?
They're not, they're always, they're billed back and they can be, but you're always going to have that cost and you're not going to get a hundred percent back, because there are, um, days that they're specified to service court-appointed attorney at three hundred dollars per day, whether it be for zero, one, ten cases.
Yes.
So in the circuit court, they will bill them back. Um, district court also has a, a bill back, but I don't know how that will, that legislation is constantly changing.
And like you said, it's probably going to be a small amount, because it's-
It's slow coming in, I mean, you know, if we, on the circuit, we certainly can apply it to that, but we've got laws that govern how much we can take of, you know, their money, how we have to apply it.
Yep.
So that shows up somewhere else if we get any in? Does it come into court then, or something?
We get it, does the court get it?
It goes into the general fund, but there's pending legislation, the state of Michigan wants it.
I'm sure they do, because they gave us the two oh six or are going to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The next page is, uh, nineteen of seventy-eight, uh, two sixty-one is your gaming. Um, we, uh, create this budget so that in the event that you do have allocations that go to the band and get approved. So we start it with twenty-five and we just issue twenty-five. Um, it's just so that there's something there in the event, um, through the year, when the allocations are asked for and granted. So page twenty-three. This is the concealed pistol license fund. This is the revenue that comes in through the clerk's office into this fund for CPL licenses, new and renewal. Uh, so, um, this budget stayed the same, other than, um, on the bottom, uh, the nine seventy oh one oh, there's three thousand here, um, looking to possibly get a new printer for our CPLs. And then the transfer out is per the cost allocation fund. So that's why you see that little bit of an increase from the proposed to the department request.
So that was a big jump in audited twenty?
Yes, she was, oh, um, fee-wise?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yep. And, and most likely even on the eighty-four, we're probably, um, on the reserve side for revenues there. Um, because you can see, um, twenty twenty-one, as of June, was already six grand. And the total budget was sixty-two. Really depends on new trainings. It's, the CPL is good for five years, so you just don't know what, how that rotation's going to go. So we stay, we err on the side of caution on that one and, um, right now, the cost allocation is, um, stayed in twenty-five sixty-nine, but it's a large percentage of the clerk's office, um, staffing time that goes into processing a CPL from start to finish now.
So, and I was just going to ask you that, so we do the transfer out?
Yep.
Where's that transfer out then?
Goes to the general fund.
To the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
And then we're just paying clerk's office out of the general fund to handle? Indecently.
Hmm. Um, page twenty-four is the two sixty-four corrections training fund. So this comes in part of another jail, um, benefit, in essence. So, um, something, um, new here, uh, I shouldn't say new, is that there's ammunition. Um, so that is a line item that has a budget for this year. Uh, we used to put that in under operating and office supplies. And I think a better way to track it was to do ammunition support, Todd and, um, excuse me, Lieutenant Roush and, um, under Sheriff Kiesel have, we have put that in also in the sheriff and jail, just so they can track it. And ammunition is expensive and it does take a while now to get, so. Um, so we've broken that down a little bit for tracking purposes as well. So simply money coming in and expenses going out for training.
These new things he's getting, will those just come in under, uh?
I believe that, like today, that BOLA thing, that'll be in his, um, education, um, in, uh, the general fund.
For this year, and then later, maybe also ammunition, if it gets to be-
Yes, correct. And last time, I, I believe, per view, he tries to use this one as much as he can for sending away to conferences. So that's why there's that travel line item as well. So I think they each use whichever, either their fund, uh, as much as they can.
Okay.
Page twenty-five is two sixty-nine law library. This is administered by the thirteenth circuit court in Travers. So we allocate that there's to be seven thousand dollars of a transfer in, um, when needed. Lately, we haven't had to purchase anything that has taken us past that threshold for me to try out, to, uh, to send that money in yet. Kind, it kind of comes in spurts. Prior years, I was sending all of it and then lately, it's not much at all. So it just kind of goes with the changes in laws. Two seventy-three, we discussed, that's a new pink sheet. So, um, what was proposed first by Trudy in June was the, um, administration of having a staff member. And now in twenty-one, that staff, um, has been cut for the workload. And so, um, she's now projecting, um, a carryover, basically of the funds that have been there through administration, of fifty-four hundred. And so, uh, when she and I talked the other day about this, I am putting some into contingency. That's going to be, uh, if you look at page twenty-six, so it's fifty-four hundred, that's left over. And then she has, as you go down the lines, a few expenses she kept, like office and operating and postage. Basically, the bare necessities to be able to produce documentation. She still has a telephone allocated to that staff. Um, the computer has actually always been under planning. I'm not sure why the split, but that's how it comes and goes sometimes with a grant. And so we've done contingency on page twenty-seven, as well as printing and publishing legal notices and kept copy count, copy machine charges. She stated, um, if she needed more, then she would come back, or I would come back with a transfer. But as of right now, um, she's thinking maybe a couple thousand, um, when looking at, um, the administration side.
Jennifer?
Uh-huh.
There's nothing in the amount, but what is soft, soft costs?
Soft costs used to be what she could collect from the admin fee. Um, the two seventy-three and two seventy-four worked together. Um, and so out of the grant, she was able to, to take costs. And, um, so i- in essence, it could have been, um, as simple as having a lawyer look at a contract or look at the paperwork, kind of thing, that she could expense. And she had to separate it to be able to get grant money to come back in, yeah. Not that she's playing Russian roulette, but after talking with her, um, I'll probably call the auditor and we'll sit down, because she actually has designated funds, uh, if we're, if you're okay to go on. The two seventy-four, uh, does not have a grant, so those are all zeros, which is page twenty-eight. So that grant has ended and those are all zeros for twenty-two. So when you get into page thirty, um, she stated if you needed communication, we could. In this fund, two seventy-five CDBG grant, she is now working contractually with the NMCAA. But the funds that she has in this, I know she talked about it a little bit in August with you guys at the board meeting, about how a previous year's balance can then be carried forward to use for other projects and such. So she actually has restricted funds in here. We don't show that currently. And so that's something that I'm going to talk with the auditors of what, how her pieces fall into her cash, of what can and can't be spent. Um, per the documentations, she has to have that spelled out for the state. And then I believe there's money that goes back if it's not spent. I think she talked about that in August.
Yep.
Yep. So she and I have to really wrap our, our brains around this and, yeah, get this configured so that it's tracking correctly. Um, so she's got here, um, that we're bringing in fifty thousand, which is on track, um, from previous, um, for the repayment. So those would be mortgages that we've issued to, um, help, uh, citizens, the community with housing. And then they pay that back. And she stated to me that, uh, when she and I talked, that she's now in this contract with the MCIAA, that they will be paying the bills, we will be reimbursing. And then there's also an admin fee for that. So that's how she's, uh, that's how we balance this. Took a little bit of a twist from what she has done in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And so that, that budget, two seventy-five. Next budget is two seventy-seven home grant. Um, we haven't had a home built in quite a few years, but we still do have some ties to the condom, uh, sorry, condominium, that sounded bad, condominium project here in Lake Lilna. And so we do leave an expense in there in the event that there was ever a flood or something, um, that expenses needed to be used for. It actually will, it actually has a ten thousand dollar, um, cash in here. Um, but for now, she just puts the thousand in case there's something that comes up. She'd have to come to you if it was over to a thousand anyway for approval. Um, but this is, um, we were able to hold those funds in the events for that project in Lake Lilna. And it's, as you can see, it's rolled.
How much longer will we have to hold those for that?
Sounded like-
Definitely.
Definitely.
Really? Even though they're in private ownership now and?
Something I believe, and we could talk with her too about the, that it was mishda, that it was grant money. It was home grant money.
Okay.
There's probably some kind of timeline, because they built houses in Northport and built the houses in Sutton's Bay. Those are all under private ownership now too. But I believe that there was something, I don't want to say faulty, you know, but something that correlates, that could come back to us. She's kept that allocated there. Um, two eighty, which is page thirty-three, um, this is the early childhood- 280, which is page 33, this is the Early Childhood Fund. I do have a current revenue and expense from the discussion from this morning that I'd like to hand out. This is as of July 31st. The last contract payments that we've made to the Health Department was for the June 30, April through June. We are billed quarterly. So as of right now, after paying that, that second quarter, so you'll have two more quarters a half a year, there's 406,000 currently. One thing I did wanna point out is, in this budget, we had thought with the tax rule that you would collect 728. We took in 612. Now, some of this can be, and I can look into this, I just didn't have time between the two meetings today, and Darcy can help as well. We always have a deferred revenue line item. And so in this case, if you would take a look at the very bottom, there's this tiny number that says $16.96 underneath the beginning adjusted balance. This would have been the net result of your December collection. So the rest of this, the 612 was collected January to current. Your DTR is paid out in May, and so this fund is whole. So according to the motion today, with zero on the L429, these are the funds that you have to work for until 2023.
406?
Minus, yeah, that would be 406 minus your expenditures from July 1st to December 31st. Your contract that expires 12/31 of 2021 is for 640,000.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just, just between the last meeting and this meeting, I did some checking and finding out information is tough, and thank you for this.
Yeah.
But the 17, I think three of my colleagues mentioned the voter turnout was 17% or 18% or 19%. It was 32.33%. So when we're sitting at this table, let's make sure that we all have the same set of facts. Because I, I'm going back to that, because I checked on that, I knew your figures were wrong, and I know so much of other stuff that's quoted as wrong. But certainly, there's a big difference between 17% and 32.33.
Correct, but it was 17% voted in favor of it. It actually was less than 17%. So I was giving them the benefit of the doubt, and that's what I stated. It was 32% of the voters voted, and less than, and just over half of those voted for it. So that's how you come up with that. And so it wasn't a misquote. You were misquoting, there was 17%, less than 17% that voted for it.
Projector minutes.
Can I ask a question, Jen?
Certainly.
So, so the 406, you were saying what the contract was for the annual, the upcoming con...
The, the contract that I have, that states you have a contract with the Health Department until December 31st of 2021, is for 640,000.
They're probably gonna comment on the, on the capital.
Okay. So with the 000, there will be no money coming in in 2022. So if there are expenditures, if you create a contract with the Health Department for early childhood...
There will be no money to pay it. Well, it has to come from the general fund or DTR.
Right, you'd have to fund it another way.
Because otherwise, you're covering basically a year and a half of operation.
Yes, and because you paid, right, so on your, within this budget here, you have your income coming in, and then you can see in the 2021 current, that the 109 that you spent in '20, I transferred back. So that would have been your 2020 contract, was the 109, and then you have a contract with them for 640. And like I said, Darcy can help out with the numbers to come back to you, or we can email, and I can, we can get with Andrew on what that taxable is. But when looking at this, if your contract is 640, you only took in 612.
How much have they billed for, actually billed us this year?
Currently, for half a year, it's 96,000. So if you were, I don't, I'm not sure, I had Sarah pull the bill. It goes by, um, right now, it's been the implementation of who they see. So behind the bill, I'm not sure if Chet sends this to you, whatever it talks about, and we can certainly do so, you're more than welcome to, it talks about the progress and how they came up with the total of what they billed us.
Right.
And, yeah, that is from, for the first six months, which they didn't start the program until June.
Correct. So this went through June 30th. Yep.
Could we get information before Tuesday on the impact of this, this vote and this amount of money left for 18 months? I think we need to have that before we vote.
We could, that'd be good.
If there are unemployment compensations from layoff costs, broken contracts, that sort of stuff, we need, we need to hear about that before we vote.
Yeah.
Okay, the unemployment would be the Health Department. Those are not our...
That's right, no.
We have a contract that does expire. So I'm assuming they're gonna invoice us for the majority of this contract between now and December 31st.
And I can email this to you, yes. I mean, like you said, it looks like it appears to be out 56,000 with them just starting rolling. So my concern was, so you have 640 that you've done a contract with, and you've got a balance of 544 as of June, and you have 406,000.
Correct. And their, and their only billing is for what they use.
Correct.
That's why they've only billed 96,000 this year.
Correct.
You were told they're not going to use it all.
Well, they probably won't use it all, but that's one month of operation. You've got to look at it a little bit residual before then, because they started in June and made that very clear. So the amount is for a month. So you've got, you know, not quite, well, you've got six months left of what they're gonna bill.
Well, for right now, it's actually quarterly. So it's 50, this, yes, this last one was 56. Prior to that, it was 40,000.
And then that money's supposed to go through for another whole year.
Right, as you collect. Because you would collect December until May.
Correct.
So you would be looking at the front load again if you need the money. It would either come from the general fund or DTR.
So we're right to pay it back. But the contract is yearly.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Right, right. But what I'm saying is that on this contract signed, there's 544 left, and you have 408.
Correct.
406. Okay. Yep.
So this will be important to have all that information by Tuesday.
Correct.
Okay, so the next fund from there is the 281. And that's gonna be your senior services. So we have the current taxes, which is the current mileage, and then prior year's tax adjustments. Those two kinda combine into what would be collected. John decided to separate those out years ago, actually, we were using the same number if someone rolled or a tax change was done. So you can see in the previous years, that's numbers there. And then the other income that they receive, donations, sales of safety equipment, expo fees, miscellaneous reimbursements. And then at the very bottom, there's the foot care vouchers, contribution, and then the BASA, that seems like it must just come in every year. Oops, sorry, question one?
So salaries are in here somewhere, right?
Yeah, it's the very next page. Revenues on this one is a little bit larger, so it consumes for one page.
You know, we still have not addressed the significant salary disparity that somebody starts, two people start at the same salary, and four or five years later, one person makes three, three or $4,000 more. We have a, we need to fix our salary schedules, because they're not, they're not fair. They're not fair to people. So that has to be, where, where would we fix that?
Are you talking specifically about senior services? Because that's what you were...
Yeah.
Background, I don't have that sheet, but I think Jen pointed out correctly, take the names out of it, it doesn't matter what information.
Right.
If you hire a brand-new maintenance director and a brand-new senior services director, senior services director, starts at $300 more?
Yeah, 600, or about, yeah, 500.
Okay, 100 more. At the end of, before you recycle, the maintenance director's leaving $3,000 more than senior services.
So that's just a basic thing that we've gotta fix in their salary structures. So when would we do that?
Well, I would hope that the administrator and the accounting office would correct him and then bring it to us and see, unless you want us to have a committee of the whole and make decisions about every position.
What would work for you, Chet?
Lovely work with Jen, and we'll come up with a revised proposal.
Sure.
This just reminded me of that, because that's, that's unfinished business and important business.
Any other questions, Paula?
Well, are we gonna revisit everything then? Because I thought we already made a decision on that. We've already kind of hashed that out.
There was a request from the individual in that position that was not approved, that's as far as, unless brought up.
That's not what I'm talking about.
You're talking about the pay scale.
This just reminded me that we have to deal with the pay scale disparities.
Correct.
If the pay scale is, if it's wrong, we need to fix it.
And we, I thought we decided we'd do that after budget, we're through with budget.
Okay, as long as...
So we don't have that whole discussion.
As long as we have this process.
Correct.
Page 36 of 78 starts the, sorry, 35. 35 starts the expenses. So you start with your salaries. And then you'll see the budgets after the car was purchased late in the year. So you have a 743 and a 775 in the event for gas and oil and then the car repair. The contractual was brought down in relation to salaries. So that was proposed. Unmet needs and respite care stayed the same, page 36. Our medical transportation came down just a little bit. Dental needs was one of those that we were pointing off, but then hadn't corrected to have a budget. And the same thing with cell phone. So we've had expenses, and then now we're adding in at the 850-001. Travels come down by 1,000. Computer charges, we've already explained.
Do we rent all our computers?
It's not a rental, it's a cost allocation. So when we get to run, yep, we budget out how many, how many computers and software. It has hard costs, soft costs.
Okay.
Okay. And then the last one is the 999-001. That's the operating transfer out for the indirect cost. And so per our cost allocation plan, there's 68,889 that's coming back to the general fund.
The way did I go down, Jen?
It's pretty much, it would be from 2019, so it's two years behind when I'm budgeting this. So whatever activity was going on in 2019 is how they cost allocate the treasurer's receipts, our MMRMA, any legal and attorney. So it just fluctuates every time, yeah. Basically, it's by the transaction count, sorry.
I was, I was wondering, is the 424,000, is that the, what's left this year, or is that the revenue moving forward? What is that? That says net revenue expense.
Oh, you mean, are you on page 37?
Yes.
Yes. So right now, same with like early childhood, you collect in December, and then you go through till May, and then that gets you through to your next collection. So as of June, of the budget, it's 50% has been spent. Yep.
Just to cut, actually, a little bit over 50% or something?
Yeah, I didn't, I was thinking, your revenues are eight, I think eight something? Yeah, 860, 780, so depending on the revenue. 283 Revenue Sharing Fund. This was discussed at the first meeting as well, I think, first or second. This is the balance, the 43, 132. Darcy's gone ahead and balanced that out, and then the state will, and we're hoping we get to keep this money. So we're hoping they don't ask for it back. But if that's the case, that is being transferred. If we get to keep it, it's a part of your general fund revenues. And then this was covered in the actual general fund revenues, that this is a new line item, that the state will send us quarterly payments on their schedule. Page 39 of 78, 285, is the Criminal Justice Training. This is state funding that comes in for the Sheriff's Department. They use it for office and operating, ammunition, education, and travel. Page 40 of 78 is Fund 290. This is a revenue transfer in and a contribution to another agency. This goes to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Let me touch base on that last meeting. This is transferred to them for their board. Page 41 of 78 is the 292 Child Care Fund. This fund houses two probation officers, as well as a portion of the 296. It's a 25% allocation, a quarter of it for the full-time equivalent. And so this is state funding that comes in, as well as reimbursements from juveniles. And then the staffing level below at expenses. Historically, we have not needed the full 367. Depends on the detention center and contractual services for juveniles.
So it's more than two probation officers, isn't it?
It's two probation officers, and then it funds a quarter of the diversion counselor.
Doesn't it also cover some of the expenses that they had to be on a facility?
It's 100% of a facility. Any questions on that fund?
So that would be if they have to go to a...
Yeah, the largest expense here.
Residential treatment centers.
Yes, it's detention, yeah, it's residential. 43 of 78 is the 293 Soldiers and Sailors. This is a fund administered by the, with veterans as well as Chet. These are county dollars that go to veterans if they need help with their bills paid, or groceries, gas cards, can be a variety of expenses. Income qualified. There has to be a certain position too, that they had to be in.
The 293 is a little less restrictive than the 294.
But you have to have like a certain military, yeah, specific. The 294 on page 44 is, was a state contribution, it's no longer. So you can see that there's all zeros. They administer it themselves now. Page 45 of 78 is your childcare basic grant. So this is your diversion counselor. 25% is the, comes from the 292, the rest comes from grants, admin fees. And so based, this is one employee, the diversion counselor, and then they also have contractual services that they'll provide as well. Could be camperships and stuff like that. I think we had a couple last month, Melinda asked about, like the one with the South Manitou. That's where this would come from.
Yeah, camping over there.
Like a diversion.
So you take the 50,000, 600, and add another 25% to that, and that's basically...
Well, the 50,000 and the salaries is what, that's be the staff. So the 25% comes from the other childcare grant.
To this...
To going to here, to supplement this, yes. He's allowed to charge back.
Kudos for you guys to figure out where to put all this stuff. Holy cow. Holy cow.
Darcy should tell you it's a challenge between the two ninety-two and two ninety-six.
Which of a thousand different funds should we put this in?
They're a little sketchy on their descriptions.
Their staff people actually enjoy that channel.
Leave that to us. Page forty-seven of forty-eight is the radio communications project. So all the three hundred funds are your debt. And so this is the Motorola contract. And this is a transfer in from the four fifty-seven. So this is the payment on the radios.
How much longer on those?
I knew you were going to ask me. I flipped at my desk.
I believe it was twenty sixteen, is that what?
Yeah, it's eighteen.
Yeah, seven.
Yeah, so twenty twenty-six it ends. So page forty-eight of seventy-eight is three sixty-five fund, Northport Village Sewer. This is a schedule that the treasurer has on the bonds. And so from Northport, they pay us and we then make the payment on their behalf. An in and an out.
How much longer?
On that, I don't know.
I'd spend it a lot.
Thirty years.
Yeah.
Might be, I'd spend it thirty years or something then.
I don't know. All I know is it's always short.
That'd be twenty years.
It was two thousand and six or seven.
The Northport Sewer?
It's in the audit.
Yeah, it is in the audit.
Yeah, I know, I just didn't remember.
Like how long it's all, it's been a while. We weren't attending this building yet. You don't think we were in here yet?
No. At least the public hearings were over there yet. So I'm sure it was all done.
Yeah, it was two thousand and six, you wouldn't have been in this.
Right, you wouldn't have been here. Page forty-nine of seventy-eight is the three sixty-six fund, which is your LEC debt retirement. These are your bonds. So I communicated with the treasurer's office that we would roll in the fund that we saved, the money that was saved in twenty-one into twenty-two. It's less than a general fund transfer into here. So saved us a few bucks that way in twenty-two. Then it'll revert back in the future to what those payments are allocated at.
LEC stands for?
Law enforcement center? So you have a pink sheet for fund four fifty-seven. And this was brought up last meeting. This is the radio communications project. So I use fund balance to balance it. We have a user maintenance fee of forty-three four. And that comes from within the general fund. And then we utilize the thirty-one thousand six fifty from the local units. And then the PILT, we call it transfer in general fund PILT. We've kept that at fifty-two eight seventy-six of your PILT dollars. And then I've increased the six ninety-nine two thirty-three E wireless, the nine one one to one twenty, because that's what it's tracking. That's the one that you put on the bills per spring on this, on the telephone bills. So we have contractual services of thirty thousand. And then, and that's for maintenance. So there's a maintenance fee with Radio North and then another service maintenance that Matt has put in there. And then that payment out, which is the two seventy-six, which goes to the three hundred and, or the three fifty-seven fund that we just covered a few minutes ago. The next fund is page fifty-one. This is your radio communications project fund. So when your tower money has funds that you'd like to allocate and set aside, you push it through this fund as a capital improvement. So it shows on your audit that you've built a tower and such. We have continually left this at twenty-five thousand dollars. I'll probably, I would say to do the same. Again, if the ARP money gets used, we'll have to facilitate and I'll have to get, we'll have to get guidance on how that money flows for us to keep track of the capital improvements if you choose to erect towers and how that all gets allocated. Because it'll be on an ARP side funding, which is a one oh one. So most likely, we probably won't be using this fund to do that. So that's, that's where that's from. Page fifty-two of seventy-eight is your capital projects building fund. Currently, I just have it plugged for contractual here. We have not made a decision, you haven't, if you're going to go ahead on an HVAC or anything like that. So we will leave this as is until needed. Because either way, you have to fund it somehow, either general fund or DTR, to make an improvement. When do you make an improvement? Page fifty-three of seventy-eight is the five sixteen unpledged delinquent tax revolving funds. This was touched last week with the contingency of the three twenty-two seven fifty. Depending on what you wanted to do with your MERS and your building, the twenty-five thousand is allocated as a transfer out, which comes into the general fund.
Allocated towards what was purpose?
The twenty-five thousand, it was a number Michelle could probably go back and think of, but it's been that way forever. And I believe it's, the majority of the workload, would you agree, is delinquent to cover the cost of employee. The tax payments that they take aren't current, they're delinquent. So I think back was Vicki in the board when she did the budgets, and that was the amount to be justified.
Well, that makes me think in the early childhood fund, there aren't any delinquent funds. So the full amount has been paid?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yep, yep, yep.
Chad probably covers it, correct?
Yeah, the delinquent tax revolving fund will settle all of those taxes. And usually it will.
Why was the revenue down so much?
I don't know, I was going to ask Andrew. The only thing I can think of is that I didn't get time after today to go and look if they, what they do is they book back a deferral. So typically, what would happen then is when they get the taxes, when the taxes would start coming in in December and rolled into next year. In twenty-two, between John and Darcy, the auditors, they go back and show what was really to be collected back. And so an entry is made.
So it wasn't-
To hit taxes and deferred.
Yeah, it wasn't the hundred and, hundred and forty-five thousand that we paid them in, in, in twenty, what was it, twenty?
It was twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
That was, that wasn't taken out first and that's why this number's lower?
It was taken out first. So it was a hundred and nine, but you don't start to collect until December. So you, they spent, you sent a hundred and nine and then you started to take the taxes in in December. But the majority of that money doesn't come in until the next year. We don't book that back.
Okay, so it doesn't, so that isn't the reason there's sixteen dollars and nineteen cents in December?
That's the reason, the reason is, is that she has a deferral that she utilized as a formula.
Fill it in.
To fill it in.
Okay, so they may have collected that full amount, it's just it doesn't show this year.
It doesn't reflect what was collected in December.
Okay.
Right, but that is your true balance.
Yeah.
That four, that four number is there.
Right.
In anticipation of another collection. So that might be something that John and Darcy will want to get with, with Chad on, is that if there isn't a collection in December, then what, then there wouldn't be a deferred revenue. But you still have only the same amount of cash.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So the next fund is page fifty-five of seventy-eight, which is your tax foreclosure. This registers when there's the revenue coming in. And it's pretty, it's fees, it's fee generated, and then going out. The treasurer's office has a, an agreement, so a title check?
Yes.
To go out and service these properties in a sense, and so then that's, that's where that contracted amount comes in. And so right now, with the money coming in, to balance this budget, the fourth line from the bottom is eight ninety-one, that's contingency. So that's in the event that that money is there over the expenditures, if it's needed. Kind of like our contingency in the general fund. Any questions on that fund? Page fifty-seven of seventy-eight is the communications tower fund. So currently, this is one of those choices that can be made at this time if you choose to. The projected revenues coming in from the tower lease agreements that Matt has on file, the very first number of tower lease fees, is three hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. To balance the twenty twenty-one budget, he has repair and maintenance of twenty, contractual services of ninety-three. The contractual services of ninety-three is a maintenance fee in offset that we pay with the property owners that house towers. Newnans is one of them, and then there's another one in Northport, the Jumman's mine, slipped my mind right now. So that's a fixed. After that, he has the telephone bills at each of those towers, there's a telephone. The next line, which is the ninety-five five sixty-one, this is a contingency. So I have put this number and increased it according to the amount of revenue he's to take in. This number could be used if you wanted to offset the general fund more for nine one one. So instead of having a hundred and twenty, you would bump that number by that if you chose to, to offset. That is up to you. Utilities and lights is the next, and then propane, generators and heat. The rental is a twenty-five thousand, so we pay out to property owners that house them. There is no capital outlay in this budget for this year, or for twenty-two, twenty-one, I think he was going to purchase generators and such. And then the operating transfer out, which is two nine one one. That balances this budget.
So back to the eight ninety-one.
Yep.
What would we pull out of there? What's the logical, like forty-five or?
You could, you could do as high as seventy-five. It doesn't appear that he's had to use it.
No, that's what I was just-
Yep.
Looking at too.
Yep. So that seventy-five would make this then twenty-five five sixty-one if you decided to do that as a board. And then this would bump this up to one ninety-five, is that correct? If you plug seventy-five. So it'd be one hundred and ninety-five transferred out to supplement nine one one. And then that ninety-five thousand would not need to be transferred from the general fund.
I like that.
I know, that's a lot of numbers, wasn't it?
It makes a lot of sense since it's nine one one and towers and it's all connected and it's kind of the idea.
Like I said, you kind of have a perk here with the ARP that typically you'd keep it in the five eighteen in the event that you needed to erect another tower.
Right.
Good question, in terms of, have you talked with, with Matt in terms of what he might be looking at? We've got three, a new provider going on three towers. I don't know if he pays out of that. And I know he'll have some increased management fees to oversee loading of equipment and any other special needs they have. I just didn't know, with the new tower going up, then we've got two more towers to deal with. Has he talked with you at all about?
I have not talked to him about this, no.
So before we take money out of there, I think we ought to find out if you have any plans.
For the contingency?
Yeah, for the contingency. Usually when you put money in contingency, you have an idea that you're going to be using it.
Yeah, I was going to want to see.
Well, generally though, this is what we, he's done in the past for his radio, has pulled tower resources to do that though. And that's-
Not nineteen, not nineteen.
No, but it's built up, it looks like.
The question I would have, if we're going to build tower with rescue dollars, that added requirement, could that also be allocated to rescue dollars?
I don't know. That's what I mean, it'd be good to talk with Matt first.
Nine one one can't, so that would be the benefit of pulling this and paying for our nine one one because our dollars can be used for towers and possibly even read. Could somebody even be put back in the contingency line item, potentially?
No, I'm not saying I'm against doing that.
Yeah, you just want to check with Matt.
We ought to check.
Sure.
Right, I would think we'd pencil it in depending on what Matt says at this time. I think you're correct. Commissioner.
Yeah, I think we also need, boy, I hear from people all the time that I know service, we're not sure exactly how many people we're going to be able to cover with the ARP funds. Hopefully, we'll get some from the state, but chances are, we're not going to finish.
Finish?
Finish covering every single person in the county.
For what?
With the ARP, with the broadband. There's a, we have this incredible need.
This tower, I, okay, I think I see what you're trying to say.
I'm just saying, let's, we also need to define the need.
And you can, you can wait till twenty twenty-three. I mean, you have till twenty twenty-six to spend the money, right?
You have to allocate by the summer twenty twenty-four, that's by-
By twenty-six? So you have time. I'm just letting you know that.
Yeah.
That each time he adds, so it also adds to the revenue. Yep.
We need to remember that we have all sorts of requests other than, other than broadband and towers out of the rescue dollars. And that's why we're here having an input and having a special meeting.
We can always leave it proposed as is and then we could visit it in twenty-two if you feel that you want to, like, transfer it over. Yep, and it's just a transfer back to the general fund then. Okay?
I would do, well, let's look at it tentatively.
Do you want me to still check with Matt?
I, I would.
I can.
Cover that nine one one.
Sure. So page fifty-nine of seventy-eight is going to be a new pink sheet.
I would say we wanted to quit at four thirty.
Oh, okay.
So I was thinking that, you know, we should conclude with our agenda here.
Okay.
You know, this time, that'd be good?
Yes, make a note that we ended here.
So those are, I mean, we're almost up to staffing levels. I just wondered, you had a vehicle list?
Yeah, they'll be, based on our discussion last week with Jerry Coleman's vehicle, we did reach out to five vendors, some of them which are included in the state bidding process. No one has responded back, but based on the feedback we got, it looks like it'll be just under forty thousand dollars. And as you know, the last time, it probably is halfway. Putting money into a truck that constantly is having issues.
Is he going to get a chance to buy that truck? I know how men feel about their trucks.
I think you had to let go of your baby.
We would throw it up for sale as we do with all our surplus vehicles. So Chad, how would we handle that truck?
I would say with Jerry, since it's in the media, it'll just be when you find one that will make a motion at the board meeting and get it done.
The reality is always, until it's earliest, they could even, we could even order a truck if you remember. That's order the truck.
Right, it'd take about three to six months to get it.
Yeah, they have the chance.
Yes, the earliest would be, placing an order.
Correct.
So that's why they didn't want to give us a price.
It took my brother-in-law a year and a half to get his car. He just got it.
Right, then, do you think we'd be able to finish this up on, on, I'm talking about, whose future, well, commissioner's agenda request, I guess we're going to look at that, for DTR fund or an update, the DTR fund update?
I think that was, we talked about that last, because I was a little bit confused it was on here, that you wanted to wait. I thought we wanted to wait, you were going to leave contingency until October to pull the payment if John said he was going to be having more money that you could plug. Is that correct?
I think so.
That he wanted to come back?
For having it on here, it seemed like, I don't even say it again, MERS, but we had elected to talk about MERS. We had talked about some software costs and I just thought there was a, we've spent the DTR funds a couple of times. And I wanted to have some guidance as to what role we have for that and what we're using it for if we have a role at all.
I thought he mentioned that he wanted to wait until after, to leave it as contingency and wait to talk to you after, but I couldn't. I could be wrong. Yeah, that's Darcy's understanding too. So you'd leave it in contingency and then decide if you're going to do an HVAC or if you're going to do more MERS or what you wanted to, because I think you're going to tackle the HVAC in a regular session, wouldn't be here at some point. So the two hundred and fifty would come directly from the general fund each time. And then making an additional he would propose to you after the budget was approved.
That, that was, that was my hope. And my hope is we had a question on the software, we had a question on the HVAC, we had a question on, on, on MERS. And it does seem like all of those are important budget session conversations.
Yeah, I can't speak for him, but I think that's what was stated at the last meeting.
Yeah, well, the reality is, we have to wrap up this budget because Michelle has to by law publish it and put a notice in the paper. So our time is slipping away. And we do have another one scheduled for Thursday, I believe, the Thursday.
At nine.
And then we have another informational session next week. So really, Michelle, you're dropped dead and Dave is coming up.
I've already put the notice in, the newspaper, I sent it yesterday.
I've already put the notice in, the newspaper, I sent it yesterday.
Twenty-seventh.
In my calendar with me. It is the Monday prior to that October twelfth meeting.
It's October fourth.
I need to have it available in my office for public viewing on October fourth at nine o'clock.
And it'll, several year gonna be gone the last week of September, so really time is slipping away.
Right, well, I thought if I, if the Thursday, we've pretty much settled it and if we have to have the session before on the twenty-first.
It sounds like I'm in the minority on the, on the, on the DTR is being timely now. But I just thought it was, but if I'm the only one, I'm willing to pull that.
I, I really thought that his comment was that he would, you would do this during a regular session. That to leave the contingency line item as-is, that the finance director, when hired, would be the software person. So they would work together with the treasurer if there's gonna be software. And you're really looking for how much can he afford to put into MERS. Does that make sense, Doris?
Yeah.
That's really what you're looking for. And so I'm holding off to make the payment to see if he's gonna add to it after, after coming to you. Or if it's just gonna go from the general, so we have two fifty from the general fund and is he going to facilitate any more this year? And then if you do HVAC, you don't have an additional payment for MERS, is the catch-all. But you do have in the event, if you wanted to, to pull from fund balance in the general fund, to make additional MERS payments of five hundred thousand. Now granted, you're using one point six to balance this budget. So you have to leave us some, we have to have some in there to get us to the July because our collection's in July. So that's kinda, yeah.
And I would just say what I said before, that I think you, you take, this is where we start, not where we finish. We don't do this if we have anything left. And I'm disappointed that we haven't budgeted for an additional MERS as a part of this process.
We have budgeted for additional in MERS, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. So what you wanna do is allocate more additional dollars.
As I said consistently, I think.
Correct. But when you say we haven't allocated anything extra, that's not quite the truth.
Right, okay. So what I can do is, I can take a look, a lot of times when I do a year-end budget adjustment for the board commissioners on December thirty-first, I look at the revenues that have come in and expenditures going out. So we do typically, and Darcy would agree, are conservative on our revenues. So we already have collector, will be collecting, so I can take the tax rule and we can configure that number and I can plug that. If I can see that we have covered our expenses with additional register of deeds fees, anything else that comes into the general fund, I should be able to ballpark for you what your additional payment for this year would be. Does that sound good? Okay. I'm not sure I can do it for October, but I know I can do it for November.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I just wanna concur that we, the HVAC is a big huge question mark, but of course, I think any additional we can put in MERS is.
And for a duty, let's do it right and make sure it's all facts and information. And that's why we need to do more research on that.
Okay, so for, what are we doing for, I just need to be prepared. So for Thursday, we're gonna finish up after the five forty-two. Is there anything else I need to prepare?
I'm just wondering, Mr. Jeff.
Go ahead.
You know, since we took the, since the action was taken that what on the early childhood, it would be approved by the health department, DODI, and if they can do it in two days, and talk about the impact. What they need, if they need to.
Yeah, that's, I had written down, you know, what's expected in their expenses for the rest of this year.
And next.
And then, then see what they plan on for next year.
So do you want to discuss that Thursday?
If they can make it.
Yeah, if we could.
Okay, if we're sure.
That'd be good, invite them here?
We can start.
Yeah, we can start.
I've only got two and a half hours scheduled. Let's go and start earlier, like.
Well, we need to wrap up this budget.
Right.
And then put that in maybe at the end of the agenda.
I only have the funds from five forty-two until the six, till the eight oh five. So I really only have a few pages left that I'm gonna be going over with you. I mean, because of the vehicles we've already taken care of, don't have anything that I know that's on the list to still be discussed.
You say a few pages, how much time do I have?
Depends on how many questions, I mean, the five forty-two to the eight oh five is maybe forty-five minutes.
That's, Commissioner Wessel has to, has to.
Counselship meeting, board meeting at five thirty.
I would say less than a half an hour to finish the rest of the book.
You know, could we do, I'm, I'm really appreciating this. On the other hand, we have decisions to make. So we could perhaps do this, finish the book a different time and, and handle the business first. And then if we get done in time, we'll finish the book. And if not, those of us who are interested could come to a little after-work.
I see what you mean, have the health department here first and then time-wise.
Finish the rest of the agenda and then maybe we could do an extra little session sometime.
It's more important that we do the budget here than those other things. This time, we need to get the budget ready for the clerk.
Right.
That's, you know, that's why we need, we set this up with this extra meeting. And if we have time, then we can talk with the health department.
And it sounds like if, if a half an hour is not.
If they schedule it for ten o'clock, we would be there.
Those last few pages, if they take thirty minutes.
Right, maybe thirty minutes, that'd be a lot.
Right. So, and then, and the other thing I would like to know is if we can get the contract, look at the contract with them to see if we can alter that contract with early, early childhood at this time. I think there's a clause in there that we can, we can hand that contract for thirty
So I think we need to own what's really going on here. You're looking at ending the contract, it's being proposed as saving money, there's enough money in there to carry them to the end of the year and then all next year, and then we can see how the program is going and moving forward. But we're also making the point that it's a one-year contract and it's a thirty-day termination on the contract potentially. And yet, also the point being made is this is an elimination. It sure sounds like that to me.
The contract though is for a certain set dollar amount. And if I hear you're right, what you're saying is, you write the new contract for a different amount.
Correct.
Is that what you were saying?
Exactly, yes. I wanna see how it is and what we can do. If they're only want ninety-six thousand each quarter, we've got plenty of money there.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
I do.
I probably worded it wrong, but that's what I was looking at.
Then I may have worded what I just said wrong. Thank you.
I just wanted to know what it was, you know?
But once again, we made a decision and then seek the information. And, and why in the world wouldn't we have them sitting at the table and say, let's talk about your program and what you need and do we have to levy the full amount? Why would we eliminate it?
Well, I would really, I'd like to go up for bids. You wanna do that?
They've got the program going and the people are.
Well, see, that's what I mean.
Doesn't make sense.
I wouldn't wanna have a contract with Livingston County.
All right, I would say, is there anything else? Sorry, got, okay, is there any public comment? All right, any commissioner comment? So we are adjourned.